Will the Whisthicken School District Board of Directors please come to order? Mrs. Durkhouse, please conduct a roll call of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio, Mr. Badger, Mrs. David.
Here.
Mrs. D Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Frank, Ms. Greenstein, Mrs. Hayman.
Here.
Mr. Stoloff.
Here.
Mrs. Walsh. Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 1st, 2018 public meeting of the Whisthicken School District Board of Directors. I'd also like to note that prior to this meeting, the board met in executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. And with that, on our agenda, we have a list of prior meetings, a couple listed there, and after that, we have a listing of upcoming meetings as noted on the agenda. And with that, we'll move on to item four, Presentations, and I'll hand it off to Jim Crisfield.
Okay, thank you. This is the first time we're going to try a new approach to getting updated on things that are happening at the high school. And I believe I'm handing this one over to you, Joel, is that correct, or to Ally as well?
So tonight, like you mentioned, we have that new way how we're going to introduce some of the news at the high school. And tonight, we brought Owen Bame to come and speak to you about some other things. Just a little on Owen before we give it over to him. I've known Owen a long time, ever since I went into middle school and just since sixth grade, he's always been a great leader, a great friend, and an ambitious, smart person who anyone can go and talk to and just get along with. Some of the things that he's involved in is he's our senior class president. He founded Minithon, which is happening November at the high school, which is a big charity event. And he's also the lacrosse captain. He's also just involved in many student organizations and clubs. He's one of our standout students.
Yeah. Another club he's involved in is the Whist Kindness in Action Club, which is meant to promote kindness throughout the school. And outside of school, he spends a lot of time with his family and friends and is really passionate about fitness and business, and in the future wants to become an entrepreneur and study business in college. But for now, he's just primarily dedicated to making the school a better place. Thank you.
First off, I'd like to thank Joel and Ally. That was very nice and very special. So like they said, I'm going to go over some of the highlights that are going on at Whist right now. So I'd first like to start talking about the most relevant topic at Whist, which is homecoming. This week is Spear Week, so students are repping all their different outfits. Today was Pyjama Day. Tomorrow is going to be Twin Day. Wednesday, Meme Day, which I'm not even sure what I'm wearing for that one. Thursday's Lual Day and Friday's Gold Day, Blue and Gold Day. So on top of Spear Week, Whist is having its first bonfire on Thursday, which is going to be an awesome community event. People are going to be building a fire. There's going to be live music and food trucks. So I really recommend everyone come out to our first bonfire. On Friday, we have the pep rally. It's going to be a great spirited event. Teachers are going to dance, students are going to dance, and we're going to get presented the homecoming king and queens, the people on the ballot. Following this is the alumni Hall of Fame induction ceremony, and then later that night is the big homecoming football game. Next, I'd like to talk about Minithon, which they introduced. So I am co-founder and head chairman of our school's first Minithon, which replicates Thon at Penn State. Essentially, we are raising as much money as we can to fight pediatric cancer. About two years ago, I went to Dr. Blair and the athletic director, and me and two classmates pitched the idea of Minithon. They approved it on the spot. From there, we went and we got four great advisors and then interviewed people to make up our seven different committees. Now, a year and a half later, we have over 60 general members, and we're ready to put on a six-hour interactive event with music, food, and different activities. I'd also like to mention that at this event, there will be a community hour where people from all over the place can come in and listen to a family who's been affected by pediatric cancer come and speak, and then we're all going to do an illuminary walk around the circle gym. So this event is November 9th, and we'd love everyone to come out and support. In addition, I'd like to talk about our athletic teams, which are once again dominating. We have our golf team, our boys' cross country, and our girls' tennis, all undefeated. Not far behind is the boys' soccer, girls' water polo, boys' water polo, and girls' cross country, all with only one loss. And then field hockey is a winning record, and then we have a few teams that we're hoping to get some more wins. I'm not sure if any of you guys are familiar with what went down on the first day of school, but the school year got kicked off with an incredible speaker. Growing up as a minority with a hearing disability, he talked about how he overcame the adversity to become the person he is today. It was very inspirational, and I think the message was well received. Also, the school year theme this year is "Not Yet." So if you're not succeeding right now, it's okay, it will happen, just hashtag "not yet." We are also implementing second chance learning throughout the school, so if a student doesn't do great on a quiz or test, teachers are now offering a chance to redo and retake the test and quiz for more points, but more importantly, to understand the concept for moving forward. And lastly, I'd all like you guys to check out the school mural if you come to the football game on Friday. The senior class committee spent a lot of time putting it together. It's a TV show themed. It's very awesome, it looks great, so please check that out. Next, I'd like to talk about Whist Kia, which is formerly Rachel's Challenge. For any of you guys that remember, I actually came and talked to you guys about Rachel's Challenge about two years ago, and since then, we've made some great improvements. We are now Whist Kia because it stands for kindness in action, and we thought it was a more relatable name. Currently, our next thing that we're implementing is the Lunch Buddies Program, which is an inclusive initiative to help students sitting alone find people to sit with. Essentially, anybody wearing a Friends of Rachel button, says F-O-R on it, is open to having students approach them and sit with them at lunch. So we're coming out with more initiatives and implementing things throughout the school. The Whisthicken Marching Unit is consistently recognized for its dynamic style, innovative drill, and exciting musical interpretations. This year, once again, they've been doing just that. Playing at all football games in addition to their competitions, the marching unit has been incredible. Throughout the year, they have 50 meetings and perform 16 service hours for a total of 180 hours, which shows their determination, dedication, and hard work. The new STEM lab that is being built is going to be amazing. The learning will not happen mostly through making, doing, building, shaping, and inventing. Essentially, Whist is using cutting-edge software and equipment to bring digital ideas to a physical reality. This will enable students to get a more hands-on learning experience, and I'm excited to try it out myself. Whisthicken high school students are once again making the area proud, as six seniors were recently named national merit semifinalists. More than 1.6 million students around the country entered the competition by taking the PSAT or the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. They're competing for 7,500 different scholarships worth $31 million. So big shout out and congrats to Billy Bishop, Kyla Frenia, Edwin Cuffner, Alex Hui, Caleb Zhang, and Ryan Zhao. Over the summer, students and teachers traveled around the world to Australia, Belize, and New Zealand. While I did not go on the trip myself, I heard from classmates and friends that the trips were unbelievable, and they all had amazing experiences. Lastly, this year, student councils implemented the first blue versus gold teams. The school was split into two teams, seniors and sophomores on blue, and juniors and freshmen on gold. Teams compete to win in various events throughout the year, such as dance competitions, wall decorating, and much more. This rivalry has created a new sense of spirit and energy around the school, and I hope to see this become a tradition at Whisthicken. Thank you.
Thanks, Owen, for that great update. Jim, I think you have more fun news for us, right?
Well, we do have more fun news. Ms. Rossi, you want to take this one away?
Yes. Yeah. So this evening, again, I have the pleasure of recognizing those teachers who have achieved tenure in the Whisthicken School District. Tenure is a meaningful milestone in a teacher's career and is only awarded once the teacher completes a strenuous three-year probationary period during which time they are formally observed four times each school year and formally evaluated once each semester during this three-year period. Of course, during that time, teachers also have many more informal, quote-unquote, visits from others, including their principal and administrators throughout the district. A teacher's classroom performance is the primary criteria in this tenure decision, and the teachers we are recognizing this evening have demonstrated evidence and effective performance at the Whisthicken School District as educators. So this evening, we're formally recognizing and congratulating the following employees. If you wouldn't mind standing when your name is called. Kristen Abenizio, Shady Grove. Erica Giama, Lower Gwinnett. Travis Hill, Middle School. Jim Kelly, Middle School. Candace Leclerc Florence, High School. Brian McCabe, High School. Amanda Mafa, High School. Maria Rosada, Stony Creek. Jay Van Castle, High School, and Kathy Weltman, also at the high school. So on behalf of the Board of School Directors and Administrators, we congratulate you on this accomplishment, and we wish you continued success at the Whisthicken School District. If you wouldn't mind just coming forward and shaking the hands of the board members so they can recognize you personally, thank you.
Have a first off round of applause. Hopefully continuing on the positive theme, I think we've got one more presentation.
We do, and tonight's final presentation will be a summary of the results of a satisfaction survey that was administered to all parents and guardians last spring. I'm going to ask Ron to take that away, please.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to provide the results of our first annual Whisthicken Parent-Guardian Satisfaction Survey. This survey was provided to families at the beginning of last May, and it was open through the first week of June. We provided it to families in English and Spanish, and it included 12 questions that were related to parent guardian satisfaction at the school or schools that their children attend, with a comment section for additional input. In total, we received 1,698 responses, which is the equivalent of about 60% of all Whisthicken We also had a large response rate in every school and grade level, with more than 90 responses for each grade across the district. We were pleased to see a very high satisfaction rate overall based on this question, where parents indicated how likely they would be to recommend their child's school to a friend seeking a school for their family. As you can see, the district average was an 8.3 on a scale of 1 to 10, with 10 being extremely likely. We also evaluated overall satisfaction using a metric called a Net Promoter Score, which is calculated based on the question, on a scale of 1 to 10, how likely is it that you would recommend us to a friend or colleague? This is a metric that's used by marketing professionals. And based on the number a customer selects, they are placed into one of the following categories. If they select a 9 or a 10, they are placed into the promoter category, which are highly satisfied customers who are very likely to recommend your product or service to a friend. If they select a 7 or 8, they're put into the passives category, which represent satisfied customers who won't, however, go out of their way to refer your product or service. And if they select a 0 to 6, they're put into the detractor category, which represent dissatisfied customers who may share their criticisms of your organization with other people. So to find the Net Promoter Score, you take the difference of the percentage of your promoters and subtract the percentage of detractors. You remove the passives, and that represents your Net Promoter Score. If you have a 0 or above, that's considered a positive Net Promoter Score, and that's considered good. If you have a plus 50, that's considered excellent, and over 70 is considered world class. And as you can see, our Net Promoter Score is a plus 45. This is just a comparison of other industries where you can see their Net Promoter Scores being used. In the cable and airline industry, for instance, you can see some providers score very high on customer service, while others have far more detractors than promoters. On the next set of questions, we asked parents about their satisfaction with the school climate. Based on questions with a scale of 1 to 5, with 5 being strongly agree and 1 being strongly disagree. Overall, 85% of parents selected a 4 or 5 related to how welcome they feel in their child's school. 86% agreed their child feels safe in their school. 84% agreed that we have committed staff, and 79% agreed that we have well-maintained facilities. You can also see the district average scores in gold, which are all falling between 4 and 5.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What's the significance of the red line?
The red line is just to help your eye follow the progression.
It gives the impression, even though this is a bar chart, that it's dropping. If there was a range differently, it would look like the scores are going up. So it really is, I don't think, when you do this again, I think you want to leave out the line.
Remove the red, okay.
Well, not necessarily, I don't care what color it is.
That's a good suggestion. Yes, and it's true, in some places you can see it going up, and other places it goes down, so. The next two questions are tied to satisfaction with academics, and they showed that 85% of families agree that the schools provide their child with a high-quality education, but only 74% feel the schools do a great job of challenging their child to reach his or her full potential. The last two questions rated parents' perceptions of sports and activities. 86% agreed that it is important to have a wide variety of sports and extracurricular activities, while only 69% said they were satisfied with the available offerings. So as follow-up to this survey, we provided the building-specific results to each principal over the summer, and they had the opportunity to review and integrate the data into their improvement plans for his or her school. As part of our Communications Gap Subcommittee work, there are two additional surveys that we are planning to send next week to help us gauge satisfaction with a specific group of parents. One of those surveys will be sent to all kindergarten and new families to determine how well we did in assisting their family with registration and the start of the new school year. It's very important to make sure that our new families have a positive introduction to our schools and get off on the right foot. And the second survey will be sent to families of students in our English Language Development Program, and that will help us determine how we're doing with communications with parents whose primary language is not English. So this survey was translated into Korean and Spanish, which are the two most commonly used languages after English in our district. And of course, we will use this data to improve our communication strategies to support these families. And that is all I have to present, unless I can answer any questions.
I have a question. Can you go back to that last bar chart?
This one?
Yes.
So that's showing that a large number, 86% of our parents, believe that sports and extracurricular activities are very important, but only 69% are satisfied with what we offer.
So did we in here at all sports mantra, ask parents how they feel about our sports facility, how our, what we have, our sports facilities go? I know we had mentioned facilities, and we got a 79% on them being well-maintained.
Correct.
And then we got a 69% on what, that they're not happy with.
Right, and it really wasn't specific to facilities as much as the extracurricular offerings. The other question about facilities, I think, was how satisfied are you with the school facilities in general?
So the lowest mark we have are...
That's right.
Yeah, I think to basically put it into context, though, it's not 69% are dissatisfied. I mean, overall, people agree that they're satisfied basically with the sports clubs and other extracurricular activities, but it's the strength of that agreement that's kind of where the delta is. But nevertheless, I mean, it's 16, right, right. So the vast majority of parents, it's important, but they've a little bit of a mismatch in what they're going to offer. I mean, that's one of those things where that's something we could follow up on, or the administration could follow up on, to see like what's the driver of that. And it's a similar mismatch in, I think, a previous question on academics, where generally, there's a pretty high percentage of parents that feel that the school overall provides a high-quality education for their child in particular, that the school could do, there's, yeah, there's a little bit of a delta. I mean, overall, their satisfaction is fine, right? So let's not away from that, but the fact that a delta between those two kind of implies that although in general, you, great job, high-quality education for their child's But I think that the overall message, I mean, what I'm taking away from this is that overall, with the community that we serve, the parents of families that we serve, that there's generally very high satisfaction with our schools and what we're doing as a district, which is very much a positive thing. I think there's still always some room for improvement. But as a baseline for how our community feels about the education that we're providing, it's in a good place. And what I'm hoping is that this is not the only time we're doing this, but this is like an annual thing, because I think what's more, what'll be more interesting to see is over time, as we emphasize greater communication and more transparency in how we operate, trying to improve services or offerings for kids, see what kind of impact it has on the overall perception and feeling of the community. So thanks for doing this. I mean, it's something that I know I've been like trying to get us to get behind for over two years, and so it's great to see that we actually administered it last spring and then had such a great response rate, have some positive results.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
I have one question. Did the survey allow for comments? And if so, were there any recurring themes or concerns that were raised that could be kind of identified further?
Yes, there was a, the option to leave open-ended comments on any topic, and we received a lot, about 650 in total. There were, was a wide variety of topics that were addressed in the comments. About 200 of them were positive, compliments for the quality of teaching staff, as well as just the quality of education overall. So a lot of really complimentary statements in there. There was also a common theme about facility concerns, and I'm sure this is no surprise to the board. There was comments about Stony Creek enrollment, which we've been, we've been hearing about. So there was a few about the extracurricular offerings and that parents would like to see more. Specific grades, I think, were 6th grade. There was a number of parents who wished there was more opportunities for sports-related offerings for 6th graders. So a lot of, a lot of good statements for the principals to consider and work with, with their administrative teams.
So the, were the complimentary statements as well as the satisfactory statements both sent building principals to disseminate?
Again, I'm going to betray my lack of, my forgetting, most of which I learned in statistics when I took the course, but the 4.5 and 4 inside the blue bars, what is the significance of those numbers?
So that, those are the district average scores. So on the scale of 1 to 5, with 5 being strongly agree, 4, I suppose you could consider as agree, with the 3 being a neutral, if we had put labels on those numbers. So between 4 and 5 is agree or strongly agree, which is very positive, as Joe was saying. It's not that, it's not, the 74% or 69% is necessarily bad because the overall ratings are still very high.
And forgive me, you're saying that, that those, the 80% read that there's a problem with the, with the facilities, even though it's a 69? I'm not quite, I don't understand.
No, on that one, it's 79% agree that we have well-maintained facilities. And with the district average score being 4.1. So all of those categories, all of those questions had a response rate between 4 and 5, so agree to strongly agree.
Ron, that's good news.
That's all good. And anything else? All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Kristen. See, the next item on our agenda is public comment on any agenda items. Add one blue sheet, but it's, that'll be reserved for the second comment. So before we get into the various report outs, I wanted to give the opportunity for the recently-tenured teachers in the room, as well as our student board reps. If you want to take this opportunity to leave and get on with your lives, no one's going to look at you negatively. Going once, going twice.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Okay, next up is the report of the board president, and I have one informational item. I got it kind of late, so it's not listed on the agenda here, but with the departure of Tiffany from the board, in addition to opening up a board seat, which we now have Paula filling, she also left an opening on the Wellness Committee. It's a, it's a committee that the district has, and I think it's related to one of our policies on student wellness, and the composition of that involves, or as far as one board member as a rep. So Tiffany gone, we have an open spot, and we need to find someone who wants to fill it. But before I ask if anyone's interested, I'm going to ask Gary to tell us a little bit more about the Wellness Committee, like what its purpose is and often, et cetera.
All right, so the committee itself is designed to oversee and promote the well-being of our students. So it looks at things like nutrition, it looks at exercise, all the things that make for health. for a healthy lifestyle for a youngster in our system. And so the committee is, it meets annually, twice a year. It's not a heavy commitment. And the first meeting is scheduled for October, I believe it's, I don't want to commit to it. It's the third week in October. And it's a late afternoon meeting, probably like four o'clock, three forty-five, four o'clock. And again, we would love to have somebody join the committee. It's, it's made up of faculty, administration. Dr. Heim McCloskey facilitates the group, and we would love to have a member of the board join us for that work.
All right. Do I, do I have any interested takers?
Yes.
Ron?
I'll jump into the ring.
All right. Anyone else? Everyone okay with Ron? All right. Okay, Ron's our new board representative on the wellness committee.
Thank you, Ron. It's going to meet ten times over the next school year.
Next is the review of boarding items, review of voting items. It's the same items that we reviewed last week. There's two. One of them is our goals for the current year, as well as a slate of candidates for PSBA officer elections. I'll just add one, one piece of information I found out at the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit meeting last week, was that the PSBA officers, they are all running unopposed. And that's why, that's kind of a strange, I, it looked like a strange thing for us to approve because it's just one person petition. But literally only one person decided to run for PSBA. So in essence, we're just kind of rubber stamping those candidates. That's what that's about. Any other questions about those voting items from last week? Okay, moving on to report of the superintendent. Jim?
Thank you. No additional informational items tonight from the last time we met. And also, I don't have any review items tonight either.
Okay, Gary, next, assistant superintendent, report?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Okay. And report of the solicitor, Michelle?
Good evening. Yes, review of voting items, there's going to be a motion to approve a settlement.
No changes from last week?
Last week.
Report of the board secretary, Wade?
Yeah, there are no changes. They're approval of minutes.
Board treasurer?
No change there, financial information.
You? Okay, moving on to committee reports. First one up is communications. Ronnie?
Yes, we have an informational item on a calendar survey. Kristen, are you going to talk about it or is Dr.?
Again, yeah, the, before, or at the time we developed the school calendar for this current school year, two thousand eighteen to nineteen, we also proposed at that time to pass a, or to approve a calendar for nineteen twenty as well, so we didn't have to go through this all the time and people could do some long-range planning. In the course of the conversation about calendars in general, it was, it was suggested that we might consider starting the school year after Labor Day. That that was something that used to happen here in the past. It was, for whatever reason, changed in board policy, and now the board policy says it shall not happen. And there are lots of good reasons for and against that idea. Long story short is that there was a suggestion, we surveyed the community to see what the preference were out there. And so this is an upcoming, if board still is interested in doing this, it would just be a simple, one-question survey. How do you feel about either always before Labor Day, ever before Labor Day, or depending on how the calendar falls? That's the plan, to do with ministry that soon because, as you, as you know, we have to get going on the calendar for next year pretty soon.
Yeah, if you, if you guys recall, and this, this was a topic of conversation, I guess, about a year ago. And ultimately, it's us as the board that, that approves the calendar. But felt that would be helpful to just get a sense of what the parents in the community felt. Again, ultimately, we'll make the final decision, but out of curiosity, if there was like any strong feeling one way or the other, it'd be good for us to have as another data point about calendar. So I mean, I'm all for asking the question. I think what I mentioned to Kristen was that the first two options are pretty easy to understand, always before Labor Day, always after Labor Day. It's a third option that could be a little confusing. Make sure that we clearly state that option because it's, in essence, it's like a variable option, that if Labor Day is early, that we'll start after. Labor Day is seventh, for example, we'll start before. Again, it's a little, wanted to make sure that that third option was clearly stated so people can try to answer the...
And I think one of the reasons that when, when we were talking about it, I guess about a year ago, is that, correct me if I'm wrong, but they changed the, some of the testing to be later in the year?
Actually, the, some of the testing has actually moved up before January. It used to be done in January, now the December is in the Keystone test, some of the Keystone testing is done. The AP testing is still about the same time, it's that May period.
I could have sworn that there was some testing that was moved, some standardized testing, maybe that was moved back?
When we brought the testing, when we brought the testing into the discussion, I think it was because there was an argument that starting earlier provided more instructional opportunity prior to testing, any of the tests. So just because the year started earlier, there was more instructional time to benefit the students long-term.
Does the questionnaire go to just parents or does it also go to students, faculty and students?
Ronnie, do you know? I'm assuming it's just...
We were just ended to...
Yeah.
Go any further? Ones that arrange everyone?
Oh, what's your, what's your thought about banning audience?
I think it may be interesting to get faculty perception factor, rather. They have valuable input, and if it impacts the classroom, then it could be something worth knowing.
Sure.
Can't hurt to ask three different sets, same exact question, and then just slice the data three ways.
What's, what's the third set?
Staff and students. Staff is one, parents guardians two, students three.
Yeah, right.
Ask this before Labor Day or after?
I think, I think what their parents want overrides it.
I think we could probably answer that.
The students want option four.
No, you, you laugh, you're saying why you ask the students, but I think it's a very large constituency and they're obviously very much involved in this.
Sure.
And I, I think their views should also be considered. And there should also be perhaps some descriptive samples of what a, a possible calendar would look like under the three models.
That's getting much too...
I can tell you the students will answer one way in September and answer another way in June. And the staff will as well, by the way. But anyway, we'll ask the question around now-ish and then we'll, we'll get some data.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to hurt to...
Maybe we can also ask over...
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem to hurt to add those two other constituents. And again, it's just another data point for us to...
I mean, I will, I will also add, we'll certainly gather those and share them out publicly as soon as we can. There are some, I would also like to just, at that time, hear the, the instructional reasons why my opinion is better before Labor Day, but that's opinion is...
Anything else, Ronnie?
No.
Okay, moving on to curriculum and technology. Ron?
Yes, now I have a question in this new format, how you want me to do it. Should I, should I jump right into the, the items or say we're going to come back to them?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, the review of the voting items, we did that last, we went through all the voting items. I think it's just really a check since last week, if there's any new information, anything's changed. And I guess if any board members had new questions or issues that came up.
As far as I can see, there have been no changes. Is that correct? There are no changes?
Yep.
The, the only concern that I have with this format is that impression, because if we say we're all in favor of G one, two, three, four, five, and six, without any descriptive, even though it's written here.
Yep.
People perhaps watching it at home especially, who don't have a chance to get the, the printout of the, of the agenda, might think that, that we're just one giant rubber stamp, giving the administration whatever it wants without, without making the idea clear that the board has gone over this, not only tonight, when the vote would be, but also in the preliminary, you know, the last session, and also in the subcommittee session. So that's something to consider.
Eric?
But we do, we do talk about it, work session, name what they are, go over the items, vote it on. So whether it's the first meeting or the second meeting, do discuss specific.
Yeah, and also I think in, in the old model, we'd have items that came before us at a, at a given meeting, and we voted on it and moved on. With this new approach, everything that we're going to be voting, considered for voting is out in the public, one week in advance of the meeting that we actually... So in my mind, there's more transparency, the items are out there in the public sphere for a full, at least a full week, where we actually have to approve them. We, as board members, have opportunities to discuss them. So, yeah, there may be some people who kind of misconstrue structure, but I think if they took a closer look, they would see that it's a, a big improvement in terms of transparency from...
Yes, because I know in the work session, we, we certainly spent a lot of time on the items.
Yep, correct. Okay, moving on, facilities and transportation. Tracy?
There's no items at this time.
Finance committee, David?
We have a list of six items that were, I think, all mentioned for approval, the voting items, that were discussed last week. I'll just read them quickly. There's an approval of assessment appeal, number one, per document I-1, approval of food surface equipment bid, approval of winter sports supply bid, approval of higher decision insight, approval of financial reports, and approval of list of payments issued for the month ending August twenty eighteen. That's all we have.
Moving on now to the policy. Carol?
We have a number of policies that we went over last week. There are one to seven. We are having the first reading on policy zero zero six, one oh eight, one thirty-eight, two ten point one, two eighteen, two eighteen point one, and three eleven. And there are no changes in that we will be voting on our first reading tonight.
Carol, I think item, policy two ten point one, which is in bold print, actually changed from last week, but I believe there were like, like typo kind of corrections.
Okay.
Correct. This non-substantive correction...
Yeah, and as a matter of, I guess, sort of like protocol here, is that any of the items that are up for vote, if they've changed from the previous meeting, they'll be...
They will be bold.
Listed in bold.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question, being the irritant of the, of the night. In the two eighteen, with the, the change has, is pretty much, the only major change has been the changing the word pupil into students.
Correct.
Why?
I think our solicitor can tell us that.
Yes, thank you. To be consistent, you're, the discipline that you refer to, you're referring to the student code of conduct, about those policies, you're now referring to the words instead of the word pupil. That's why that change was made, that policy, like that.
True.
Consistent with the student code of conduct, whereas in the past, referred to as the pupil code of conduct.
So it's for consistency?
It's for consistency.
So that a, a student doesn't come, under the old policy, and said, I'm not a pupil, I'm a student, and then make things even more complicated than they might be otherwise? Okay, thank you.
I think pupil is kind of like a outdated term.
Yeah, I think...
Does this mean we can continue to use the word pupil in our financial categories? Some of our expenditures are listed as pupil expenses.
Moving on now to the report of the personnel director, Kathy Rossi.
Yes, thank you. The items that were on the agenda are, are still on, and it added additional items are all in bold. Oh, I'm sorry. And yes, thank you. In addition, there is a blue sheet that's in front of you that was discussed previously.
So we're adding an item eight under fifteen K. That's approval of separation and release agreement for twelve dash eighteen by and between the West Higgins School District and employee...
Yes, that is correct.
And that was discussed with the board in executive session prior to... All right, we're moving on to report of the board representatives, extracurricular committee, Tracy Walsh. MCIAU board of directors, that's me. The MCIAU board met last Wednesday, and, and pretty routine stuff. I asked a question about the PSBA slate of officers. Nothing really exciting to report there. They'll meet again next, at the end of next one. MCIAU legislative committee, Cat David or Ron? Go left.
I don't believe we have any report other than to say that the next meeting is scheduled for October fourth, seven thirty in the...
Okay. North Monco Technical Career Center, I think their last meeting, we had a meeting, no one actually attended, right?
Next meeting for North Monco is October, at seven, seven o'clock.
Okay. You? Now we're moving on to item fifteen under the agenda, board voting items. And this is going to be the first time that we're going to attempt this different approach to voting on all these items. And the approach that we're using is something that's known as a consent agenda, rather than individually voting on the various items throughout the agenda like we used to in the past, kind of consolidating them, one part of the agenda, allowing opportunities for discussion, questions. But then when we come time to vote, you'll vote in them as one big block, pulling out any that are requested by board members. So I know one, for example, Tracy, that you had requested to pull out item fifteen I six, approval of list of payments issued for month ending August twenty eighteen, per document five. Are there any other items that any other board members would like me to pull out of the consent agenda? Okay. So then can I have a motion to approve items fifteen A through K with the exception of item fifteen I six?
Second.
Motion has been approved, has been moved and seconded? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And now can I have a motion to approve item fifteen I six?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Wait, 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 wait.
Sorry.
Go back.
Sorry.
Forgot to ask for comments.
Oh, comments, okay. Rewind.
Yes, I will be abstaining from this vote due to my employment with one of the vendors. I will submit my abstention in writing.
Thank you. Okay. So now, all those opposed, say aye? Aye? Opposed? One abstention? Oh, sorry. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? And one abstention, right? Okay, so now we're at our second public comment section whereby we'll take comments on any school-related topic. And we have one person who signed up, Christine De Laurentis.
Good evening. Christine De Laurentis, Ambler. I came up with, I came tonight with one...
I came up with, I came tonight with one and as people talked about stuff, I, two small other things. First, calendar. Before the current board policy was passed, the previous school board, a couple of school boards ago, did a survey for parents, apparently came back 50/50 for before Labor Day and after Labor Day. And the former superintendent recommended the, that the consistent earlier timed was specifically to give AP students additional instructional time. That's why she recommended that recommendation. I just wanted to give you historic and I will put my vote in for after Labor Day. Okay, the second one, it seems that I say this every year at homecoming. This year I have a middle schooler and a high schooler. In the past, I've, you know, they've moved through the school district. It really is upsetting to me that Spirit Week before homecoming is only for the high school. Spirit Week at other schools is sprinkled out throughout the fall, but homecoming is only here at Wisconsin, homecoming is only reserved for the high school students and nobody else. There shouldn't be a Spirit Week in the middle school next month. It should all be this week. Everybody should be excited about homecoming, not just the ninth through 12th graders. Okay, I'll leave that there. So the reason why I'm coming tonight is I have a senior. And as a senior, my daughter has five bazillion additional things that she needs to keep track of this year. We've got yearbooks, we had rings last year, we have pictures, we have senior class pictures, we have. Do you know there's not one place that all of that stuff is listed? She gets a little blurb on Schoology, I might get an email in some other way. It might get posted on the Facebook page. I might get an email in some other weird way. There's no master list that says, as a senior, these are the important dates, these are the things they're going to have to purchase, these are the deadlines, we need to have this stuff by. It's all done piecemeal. And you know what? My daughter, I, I love her to death, she's overextended, she's got two AP classes, she's in three different organizations this fall, that literally she's going six days a week to different things. So when she missed her senior class picture, not the one that goes in the yearbook, but that's a whole nother story, that was a mess too. But the big, big group class picture, last week was the last day I was out of town. I emailed her today, I was like, hey, did you get this? She goes, no, I missed it. Because there's no master list, we don't know these things. And you know what? I know that we want our young people to be responsible and I get it, but they're juggling a lot of stuff, we're all juggling a lot of stuff. It would be really great resource if there was one place. For God's sakes, I get weekly emails from the counselors at the high school about college prep. That keeps me more informed about college prep than I need to know at this point. However, I have no idea when all this stuff is due all the time. So I think we can do a better job with that in some way. And the ship has sailed with the senior class picture, however, it doesn't have to be that way next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and just from a parent who went through this not too long ago, I have to totally agree. We, the whole society has eight million things that they're doing in eight million different directions. And if we could have somewhere, especially for seniors and maybe even juniors, because you know, the whole college process is happening with the ACTs and the everything else. If we had some calendar, maybe just junior calendar and a senior calendar of here are all of the deadlines and here are all of whenever these are happening. Like Kristen said, you get emails from the college counselor and those are awesome emails. And I think we do a great job with that. But with everything else, just so many different places that you inevitably lose some, miss out on some.
My daughter's a junior and I've seen those emails from Stacy Anderson. They are full of information, but it's like, kind of overwhelming. And that's just one college application. So, right, I commiserate. And I have twin boys who are in seventh grade and their organizational skills are kind of lacking. This would seriously help them.
Right, and I will second.
We have a little runway to get that thing nailed down before, before it hits them.
I will second that as, as a person who would be probably not able to walk downstairs in the morning if it wasn't for my calendar and the phone. I know Google sends out alerts if you set it up that way, a Google calendar. And if we could set a calendar up for juniors and seniors or for that matter sophomores and freshmen. And probably the same thing is happening in the middle school and the elementaries as well. That we could have these calendars set up and to send these things out for students early enough so they can actually do something about it, so that their mothers don't find out that they've missed their, their senior picture. I think it's something that could probably be done. And I'm sure we probably wouldn't have to use our technical staff. I'm sure our, we have students who could easily do this, the, the technical level that would be necessary.
All right, thanks. And with that, we'll move on to board comments. Any?
Probably being out of order.
No, that's fine. Any other board comments? No, well, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Meeting adjourned.